It's the August 25th, 2014, meeting of the Revere City Council. I'll rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta is absent, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present, approval of the Journal of the meeting held on August 11th, 2014.
All in favor, all opposed, so voting. Yeah, we're here for suspension of the rules, all in favor, all opposed. This time we'll call on the...
Calendar item...
Chairman, we'll call on the Chairman of Ways and Means for our committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Subcommittee met earlier this afternoon, and we had four items on the agenda. The first being the capital needs assessment and proposal, and that was voted out favorably by the Subcommittee. The second is the unit contract between Unit C and the city of Revere, and that also was voted out favorably. Third being was a review of the water meter program by Mr. Anzoni, and that was just a review of what's taken place on our new water meter program. And the third is the free crash appropriation for renovation to City Hall, and that was also voted out favorably, almost unanimously. So, I ask that we take these individually, so that the voice of the City Council could be heard.
Madam Clerk.
On the capital needs assessment proposal, shall the City Council transfer $45,000 from the stabilization fund to the mayor contracted services account? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta is absent, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Shall the City Council approve the union contract between Unit C of the Laborers International Local Number 22 and the city of Revere, covering the period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta is absent, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan votes yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the Unit C contract has been approved. And shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $50,000 from the stabilization fund to the City Hall renovations fund? Counselor Rigo.
Mr. President.
Counselor Riordan.
Is it possible to have some discussion on this?
Certainly is.
Well, I don't see that my concerns about this renovation fund vis-a-vis the old McKinley School and what's going to be done with that has been addressed. It seems to me that renovating this building without taking into consideration, and I said this at the first hearing, seems to me that it makes absolutely no sense to do that until we have a handle on what we're doing across the street. And I'd be reluctant to vote on anything that we're going to turn around and say, why didn't we do that, and why didn't we do this later on down the road? So as far as I'm concerned, I'm just not in favor of this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't have a problem with this, but I just want to make sure that we as the council have input on the redesign of everything on this floor, because I wasn't happy with the design that I had seen with... Nothing against Revere TV, you know, I think they should have a good space, but I just want to make sure that this hall is not affected as far as reconstruction. If we want to paint it and fix it up, fine, but I don't want to see anything put in this hall, and if Revere TV, you know, if we have to give them space, let's find it, but not inside the hall. I don't want a cube standing behind us, you know, with anybody in there, you know, doing the TV show. Mr. President.
Mr. President. Counselor Guanasso.
We had a Subcommittee meeting this afternoon where the interest of this particular proposal was addressed. This is the purpose of a Subcommittee. Now, to go over it again, some of these questions that have been asked were reviewed at Subcommittee in depth, and I think in fairness of the process, and I'm a full believer in protocol, and I think that our protocol is that we have a Subcommittee. Now, if we're going to go over Subcommittee hearings review every time we have an issue, then let's eliminate Subcommittees.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I think... Let me just, hold on, just for a second. I think what we need to make clear here is what we're actually voting on. We're voting on $50,000. I look at that as a needs assessment process. It's not in any way going to be doing any renovation with $50,000, because you can't renovate your basement for $50,000 today. So, this is a needs assessment to talk about what's needed and what's going to happen in the... So I just want to clear that up for everybody. It's not, we're not voting on funding this renovation of City Hall, far from it. So that's where we're at here, and I agree that there was a Subcommittee meeting, and that was discussed, that this is just, that's what this is, it's 50 grand. It's not $5 million or $500,000, or whatever the renovation will actually cost. Okay, anybody else?
(noise)
Okay, so on the recommendation of the Chairman of Ways and Means.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $50,000 from the stabilization fund to the City Hall renovations fund? Counselor Rigo.
No.
No, Counselor Gino.
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
No.
No, Counselor Morabito.
No.
No, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta is absent, Counselor Powers.
No.
No, Counselor Riordan.
No.
No, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer fails.
Is that all the Ways and Means? Okay, at this time I'll call on the Chief of Police and the sponsor of the road race. Sorry, I don't remember his name.
Good evening. Thank you for having us in front of you. I'm here with Mr. Kramer, who's the race coordinator for the upcoming half marathon that's planned on Revere Beach. We've been working with Mr. Kramer very closely, myself, Sergeant Janino, state police and DCR. I think we've got a plan. It's not, it's not an event that's not going to inconvenience people, not going to lie about that, but we try to, we aim to minimize the inconvenience as a third year running, and it's gotten considerably better from the first event. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kramer and let him address any concerns you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Ron Kramer. I'm the Senior Event Director for Dave McGilvary Sports Enterprises. My home is in West Palm Beach, Florida. I am up here for the summer, as I've been for many years. I'm a Boston boy.
Welcome to Revere, home of America's first public beach.
Well, thank you very much. I had cousins in the '50s that lived here for many years. At any rate, my associate Joe Robertson was here a couple of weeks ago, addressing your concerns about, you know, community outreach and just what the race was going to do to, you know, notify, you know, the residents and businesses along the course. So I'm here to report to you, and I prepared, you know, a couple of, you know, documents here that support what we have done. We had a team on the street, if you will, last week that sent out community notices about the race to every business, every resident, home along the course, and including the condo buildings along Ocean Ave and Revere Beach Boulevard. We feel confident that, you know, we'll follow up with those managers and residents about the course. The particular community notice will be posted, you know, on the city's website. We'll continue with our outreach program as the race gets closer. Included in the packet that I prepared, and I can leave with Ashley, you know, four or five of them, are the various community notification programs of the various stakeholders that we have contacted and will be continuing to contact. In this document presentation is also an acknowledgement of all those condo buildings, managers that have received it. And we once again will plan on, similar to last year, you know, a no parking, you know, signage that will go up a couple of days before the race to further, you know, notify the community about, you know, just how best, you know, they can, you know, plan and prepare, you know, for the event. You'll also see in there is what we call a race-paced timeline, according to our permit, which is a limit of three hours for the race. I do want you all to know that, you know, our experience over 30-plus years of race management, we take this very seriously, so that we stay strictly to that paced timeline and work with public safety. We've met with, as we always do, in this case here, with state police, Boston police, and the Revere police, you know, for our public safety program, and you can be assured that the 11:30, you know, timeline that we have established, you know, for our perimeter, you know, will be maintained. Also want to point out that we open the roads on what we call a rolling opening basis. In other words, when the last runner reaches a particular intersection of the course, you know, public safety, in this case, the Revere, you know, police department will, you know, start to open those roads. So I feel, you know, that we have, you know, reached the community, and I'm here to, you know, answer any questions that you may have, and if it's relative to public safety, you know, Chief Cafarelli can, you know, support that, those questions as well.
Thank you. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Sir, as far as opening the roadway you just said...
Yes.
If I, I live at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. If I want to go out, can I get out?
If it's an emergency, yes, sir.
Well, not on emergency, I'm talking about if I want to go to church or anything else.
I talked with Chief Cafarelli about that, okay? I mean, according to our permit, it is a state road, okay? We do have access, you know, to curb to curb, okay, during the race. You know, we cannot put, you know, runners' safety at risk, and we can't put the city of Revere at risk, okay, by having a car come out onto the road, you know, in the middle of a race. But obviously, if it's an emergency, any vehicles that need to, they can get out. So to answer your question, it would be no.
That's no was mentioned two weeks ago at the City Council meeting.
What was mentioned?
It was mentioned, people can go out? Do you need to hold with the street for 20, 2,000 runners over a three-hour period?
It's an out-and-back course, sir, so there is not room for a car to come out onto the roadway.
Why couldn't you take center line left or center line right?
Because there are runners on both sides of the road at the same time.
I'll tell you, it's not going to work out.
Well, the permit suggests that it will.
All right.
And we have public safety to enforce that.
That's going to be, that's going to be a mess that day, Joe.
If I may, Counsel, that portion of the race course, a lot of it is out of our control. We've sat with the state police, DCR, expressed our concerns with respect to the residents there. I'll have my officers, we have a number of officers, we'll be working, we will endeavor in every way possible to minimize the inconvenience, to get people moving. Part of that is going to be to put people on notice that there is an event taking place, but the permit that was issued by the state and the DCR calls for it to be that way. It was not something that they would, they would bend on, unfortunately.
You know, it's a state road, we have residents in that area, so they're going to be penalized for the sake of the race.
Correct, and that's part of the planning process is a Sunday morning, and it should be done by, off, a portion, a good majority of that will be off the road by somewhere between 10 and 11, and as it thins out, you know, you can be able to move some people around.
But the question is, last two weeks ago, the individual before us said, yes, they would allow the cars to go out, and that was my issue.
That may not be possible, Counsel, just in the name of safety. I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas, Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. To say the least, I am not happy. My folks live on Ocean Avenue, from Revere Street down to Shirley Ave, and we were told by Joe two weeks ago that there will be a lane available for them to get out in the morning. We specifically asked him that, and he said, yes, they will, because they'll only be using three lanes on, at least Ocean Ave, I don't know about, you know, on the Boulevard, but to lock these people in their homes for Sunday morning and stop them from going to church or going out to meet their family in the morning is totally outrageous, to me, I say the least. It's a great, it's a great program, we don't have anything against it, but our people are being penalized and put aside for something that has nothing to do with the city of Revere. They want to raise money, you know, it's nice that we can raise money for ALS or MD or whoever it may be, but totally impractical and poor planning, as far as I'm concerned, locking people in their homes. They've been going through this for three years, and we were told that one side is going to be parking, one side is not going to be parking. I don't know if that's your story at this point, sir, but these people have to be allowed to get out. You know, to get out of the house for the morning, at least get out, and then come back later on, I can live with. Or make them go out in one direction, not in both directions on Ocean Avenue. You know, have them head out to Beach Street first, the short version of the roadway, but not letting them out is putting people in jail, and I totally disagree with it, and if I had a vote on it, I would vote against it. So I feel very strongly about it.
Counsel, it's, as much as I can appreciate your concerns, a lot of this has to do with permitting that's on DCR roads, and that they, we sat with them, we've argued, very similar argument that you've made, and it was decided against on the permitting side. So it's not that I don't understand and feel your pain, and feel the pain of your constituents, I certainly do. We're going to do our best, we're going to work with Mr. Kramer to get the word out on the public safety side, if they need to get out, what time to be out, what time to get back in, try to get the information out as broadly as possible through social media. You know, we have a beach that we've been trying to showcase for many years, as you're well aware of, and you've supported, and it's a good opportunity to get several thousand people. It's about 4,000, I think, is what we're looking at for attendance. So it's a good opportunity to showcase the beach, so it's, in that respect, my endeavor is to make it as safe as possible.
Let me ask you this, if I may, Mr. President. When Joe was here two weeks ago, I had asked him to have like a public meeting down on Ocean Avenue with the condo association, the two condos. Is that still an open thing for you?
Yes, I believe that's September 2nd.
It looks like it's going to be September 2nd. They're meeting tomorrow night, I believe, to talk about it first and then let me know.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, are you prepared to tell them they're going to be locked in their houses for three hours? Or is Joe going to tell them that?
I'm prepared...
Because you better have one of these guys available.
I'm prepared to tell them that we're going to do all we can to help them plan, okay, so that they can have access if they need...
If I may...
They park their car in another area, perhaps.
And I appreciate that, but the planning should be on your part, not on their part. They are the ones that live there, they're the ones that have to get out.
Please understand, okay, this unfortunately cold fact, okay, and that is that the state police, okay, who have jurisdiction over that roadway, okay, when we measured our course, we did measure it just on one side, okay, the beach side, to leave access open, okay, on the other side to all those residents, and they enforced the fact that it has to be curb-to-curb. They didn't want to put the runners at risk, okay, and as the chief said, we tried our best, you know, with them when we went through the permitting process with DCR and then, of course, state police, who was enforcing the permit, okay, to do just as I said, and they adamantly do not allow it.
So does that mean the parking, there's no parking from curb to curb now?
No, what I'm saying is, there's no access for people that...
Well, let me ask you this, is if they wanted curb-to-curb, does that mean there's no parking on one side of the street?
Well, the fear is if somebody parks on the road, okay, then they can come out any time and get in their car.
I just asked a simple question, is it parking on one side of the street or not?
Both sides will be posted, Counsel.
So both sides, that's a simple, simple answer, that's all I want to know.
Both sides will be posted.
But, Mr. President, you know, I would recommend that next year we send a letter to DCR showing our concern and disrespect for the people in the city of Revere. I think it's disgusting the way our people are being pushed around and not appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Nowosowski. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, when your representative was here last, at last meeting, I specifically asked for them to have meetings with the boards of directors or the project managers, property managers in those particular buildings. I represent 1,500 people that live from Carey Circle all the way up to Revere Street, and that's plus what Counselor Nowosowski represents. And I would have thought this evening, we would have had some type of a report back here, descriptive of the meetings that were held for each counselor on this City Council, not just one report, something that we could have looked at. You know, people that live down there, they work during the week. Many of them are senior citizens also. This is the day they get to go out, this is the day they get to go to their house of worship, no matter what it may be. And I think it's, you know, I think it's a tremendous inconvenience to lock 1,500 people in their homes for a period of three hours. Something's wrong with this, something's wrong with DCR for allowing this, and I think that this council should go on record, and the mayor should go on record, is asking this not to happen again. Three years ago, I believe it was, they were going through the streets in the Point of Pines, people couldn't even get out of their homes down there, and to ask people that not to park, we park every night in the week, not to park here. I'm all in favor of raising money for charities. I think it's a good cause, but I think, you know, there's a fine line here. When you start penalizing people, taxpayers in this city, to run a road race, something's wrong, and again, I think this council should go on record as opposed to this. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I think we're all getting a little aggressive, you know, it is for a good cause, so let's keep that in mind, and I think it's very disrespectful that these people are taking time out of their day to speak to us, and they're not trying to do anything wrong. The problem is communication and planning, so we're trying to work on that. So thank you for coming, and thank you, Chief, for taking the time out of your day to come and tell us that you are looking out for our residents, and you are making sure that our residents have the best protection and safety needs and access possible to everything that they need. I have a couple of questions. One, I know we talked about using the MBTA big garage that we just built, has anything been talked about for residents to utilize that garage or to have, you know, make arrangements using that garage, because we have several weeks, we have a lot of time for planning, we've known about this for a year, so we do have ample time to plan and to make sure that everyone has everything that they need to accommodate these few hours. So I guess my question right now is about the garage, has anyone talked to the MBTA about using that?
I don't believe they have, Counsel, not at this point, but it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic, it's an option, it gives someone, you know, a place to go if you don't have off-street parking or you really need somewhere, and I think it's important, you know, we are causing an inconvenience, and we've all noted that, we're aware of it, but we are looking for ways to help our residents so they're not put in a bad position. There's plenty of time, plenty of planning. It brings over 4,000 people to our beach, you know, when we have the sandcastles, we're so proud of our beach and to see kids and families and people using our beach, you know, it was amazing when I walked down there and saw people bringing their kids to the beach, and I think that this gives another opportunity for people to come to the beach for this and say, oh, you know, their next Saturday off, remember we went to Revere Beach, went to that pizza place, let's go back there, or let's do that, and it brings business back to the beach, and I think that any opportunity we have to showcase how beautiful our beach is and how far we've come to make our beach what it is, we should take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Guanasso.
I certainly want to showcase Revere Beach, but I certainly don't want to showcase it at the expense of those residents that live and reside there. Certainly, I was outraged with my experience with the state police, and now it only holds true to the fashion that they made the decision that the people should be locked in their homes. They decided in a room in Boston with DCR, none of which live in the city of Revere, none of which in the state police live in the city of Revere, made this decision to house these people to stay in their properties and don't come out unless it's an emergency, unless we allow you to, next to the last Sunday of the summer in Revere Beach. That takes away one whole, what are you going to do if you're tied up and you can't go to the beach in the morning and get preparation to go to the beach? That means that Sunday is removed from the calendar for all the individuals who want to frequent Revere Beach, not to suggest even the least that all the businesses who are waiting to make their monies the last couple of weeks of the season, they're being deprived of this. They're not going to get any monies from this race. This race is only beneficial to the individuals who run it and the individuals who seek the money to retain it and for the cause that it, we have so many causes now, we're willing to share. We're, City of Revere is a giving community, we give to the bottom of pockets, we give every, but this is really over and above, and I think it's an affront to everybody in our community to make this decision without the input of our, at least, they've shared this experience for the last three years. This is not a good thing. I mean, the idea of running is wonderful, but this is not good for our area, and I suggest, as Sol was here last week or a week or so ago, hold it in October, it's not even going to, you know, hold it out of season, at least let it not be a beach-given day, but this is the next to the last week of summer, and it's really not a very fair thing for those people who live and reside there.
If you like, Counsel, I'll voice any support from the council, I will forward to the DCR on our next meeting. Unfortunately, I think this may be a foregone conclusion, but I will make your concerns known. I share your concerns.
I think we should meet before the next year's plans are put in place.
Absolutely.
We are really outraged.
There will be an after-action, you know, what went right, what went wrong, that I'll be sitting on as well as Sergeant Janino, probably, or at least somebody else in my command staff, will voice those concerns and endeavor that in the future that the council is put on notice early and often, and your input...
Well, all those residents, I agree, and all those residents that live and reside there, I apologize to them, because we didn't have any input in this, and had we had the input, this wouldn't have happened, because I don't want to repeat myself, but I just think that it's awful to take place and displace that many people in one given Sunday morning, and I just don't think it's fair. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Following up on Counselor Janino's point, very specifically, last time when Mr. Robertson was here before us, I specifically asked him to call the MBTA and find out specifically if they would be willing to waive fees for the parking garage for that day. Now, it seems to me like you're just hearing this for the first time.
No.
Well...
Counsel, I think I ain't hearing this for the first time.
I know you are, Joe, because you weren't here, I know you weren't here last time. But, I mean, that's not, the answer as, yeah, maybe we'll do it at this late juncture, is not the answer I was looking for. I was looking for, yes, they'll do it, or no, they won't, and it sounds like they haven't even been called. Now, there's no question, I don't understand how you could possibly run a road race without having the full width of that street to be done, so once that decision's made, I certainly understand the state police's consideration that if you don't do it that way, people are going to be running into each other, it's going to be a miasma, and if you do have to get emergency vehicles down there, you won't be able to do it, because it'll be that much, that much narrow. That I get, but it seems to me that the DCR has used a complete lack of imagination about how to run this thing and still take care of the residents down there. Just off the top of my head, it seems to me if they put a couple of golf carts on the sidewalk for, A, emergency purposes, or even just purposes of getting elderly people who couldn't walk to where they need to go to their cars, for instance, off-street, that's a... that's an option that could have been considered. And you know how it could have been considered? DCR could have come down here and said, hey, you guys, what do you think about this? Instead of just saying, this is what we're going to do for you, tell us what you think about it, and picking up their phones and saying, I got something else to do, but keep talking. That's what I get, that's the feeling, I get what they did. They never came to us beforehand and said, what do you think, how do you think we can run this, that will keep everybody happy? They said, we're going to run it this way, and just let us know how you like it, which you're hearing now, which isn't very well. So it seems to me, next year, we ought to get a little more advanced notice of this. I'm going to suggest one thing, that you know, not doing it September, but doing it in October, because there are active businesses down there who don't close on Labor Day. They expect the summer to last at least as long as the meteorological summer goes, which is until the 21st of September. And perhaps if you moved it back to October, there'd be less of an impact on that, then. But what really concerns me, beyond what's already been said, and that concerns me also, is this lack of concern about getting people who use the beach onto the beach. Because unless they walk, they're not going to get there unless that garage is open. And that's what the garage, one of the things the garage was intended for, so I wish you'd, I wish you'd do something about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Riordan. Councilor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this is going to happen in a couple of weeks, no matter what, so a lot of the grandstanding that's going on is really more probably based on what's going to happen next year. And I do think that we need to address that for next year. But my concern in hearing this is getting the word out to the residents so that they're not trapped. That's the one thing that we have, you have one job, basically, right now, for the next couple of weeks, is to get the word out. And Chief, you mentioned social media. Will we be doing a reverse nine-one-call? Are there any other forms of communication that are going to be out for the residents so that they can plan ahead? It does, it's unfortunate, and it's a disservice to the residents that they have to plan ahead, and they only have a couple of weeks to do that, but they have a couple of weeks to do that. So it's a good thing. And if we can get the word out as soon as possible, so that they're not stuck, so that they can make arrangements to, you know, maybe they go to a different mass, you know, there are things that can be done, and it is an inconvenience, but I think we need to focus on the communication plan and what's going to happen between, you know, tonight and the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rigo. Let me just say that we've got enough time to at least make this less painful. It's never going to be completely palatable to the residents that are going to be locked in their houses. If we can, one, get the MBTA to let us use the parking garage, they can park there the night before, they can get out and get to the, whoever goes to church, whoever goes wherever they have to go on a Sunday morning. What's happened here is a little bit of a breakdown in communication. The young man that was here a couple of weeks ago made some statements that didn't turn out to be true. I know that wasn't intentional, it was probably before the permitting process and before you were told you couldn't, you had to have curb to curb, and because people were absolutely told that they could get out, they would be directed out during the race. Sounded a little hairy, but that's what they were told up here. So if everybody's quite angry, it's because they were told one thing, and now tonight, it's a totally different story. It's just, it's not what was promised. So now, I think your job, more than anybody's, is to, number one, try to secure this parking garage so we can make it at least somewhat easier for these people to get out on Sunday morning. If their car's in the garage, they can go over the footbridge and into the garage and go on their way. And the, you know, any kind of communication, be it social media, whatever we have to do to get the word out so people aren't just shocked that they can't get out of their house on Sunday morning, would be great. But I think in the future, if there is a next year's race, we've got to work harder on at least the communication and at least making this as least painful as possible. But for the people that live there, it's never going to be 100%, let's face it. It's an inconvenience, it's always going to be an inconvenience. We can minimize that to a certain extent, that's what we need to do. So I'm not going to go on about how angry I am and all that crap, because that's not going to, it's not going to serve us anywhere. But what I will ask you to do is really try hard to make this work, and by making it work, make it as easy as we can for these residents. And that, I think the biggest thing is probably the parking garage. Sounds to me like that's, that's one of the key things we've got to work on to get going. And of course, the code red and the, and the social media and all the other communication. So that's all I'm going to ask of you.
All right, just a few final comments, then, if I may.
Go right ahead.
I completely empathize with all I'm hearing here tonight, okay? Having put on road races for over 30 years in communities all across the country, okay, we certainly understand, you know, the impact that it is on residents, okay? It's just one of those unfortunate things, okay? That we are going to restrict people at certain times, okay, from their everyday, you know, activities, okay? We try to, as best we can, is to minimize that, you know, by having a solid community outreach program of notification, okay? We think so far, we have done that, and to your point, we will continue to do that in these next couple of weeks, okay? Joe did contact the MBTA people, okay? So we do have, okay, that ability to use that garage, okay? And I'll finalize that and report back to you on it, so that there'll be that possible use, okay? Lastly, the point about DCR, okay, and the state police, please understand that, you know, during the process of submitting, you know, permits for the race, okay, we understand the channels to go through, okay? And they're usually, you know, through public safety and those certain roadways, okay? We did, I believe, you know, notify and keep in touch with, you know, the political people in the community here. I mean, the mayor was certainly, you know, knew about the race from the start, okay? I believe he was at our race last year. But at any rate, the point here is that if it's going to help, okay, still being, you know, the possibility of a, you know, a summer day, you know, on the 14th of September, you know, that we look at, you know, moving it a couple of weeks, you know, into October, then we'll certainly look at that option to see if that fits in, okay? But however the process is, okay, rest assured that I will, in my discussions with DCR and the state police, okay, certainly invite, you know, any one of you members, you know, to come to our planning meetings that we have, you know, just at the DCR office down at Elliott Circle. And we have those, you know, at least four times, you know, during the year, all right, so that you can become part of that planning process and actually be part of our operations team, okay?
Just a quick note, Mr. President.
Councilor Rigo, you had something?
Yeah, if we're having a meeting on September 8th or before the, before the race, maybe we could put it on the agenda, have another update in terms of the MBTA. And we might also want to get in communication or send something to our state delegation. It seems like they, you know, they're kind of nowhere to be found on this issue, and, you know, maybe if we could get something out to Representative Vincent and Speaker DeLeo about this issue, that might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rigo. Okay, so we are going to meet on September 8th, so hopefully, we can have all this finalized by then.
For sure.
Thank you. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number one, the city council and Mayor Rizzo will present ETP scholarships Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the application of National.
Are there people receiving the ETP scholarships here this evening? I guess not. Okay, somehow, there was a miscommunication again. We're doing a lot of that tonight.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the application of National Grid requesting permission to install conduits on Ward Street.
Any proponents, anybody here from National Grid? Here we go. Name an address for the record, please.
Mary Ellen Murphy, 170 Medford Street, Malden.
Okay, Ms. Murphy, you want to tell us what you're going to do?
We're going to install a pole on Ward Street and some, I think it's five feet into the private property with PVC conduit to feed three buildings that are going up on Ward Street.
Okay, is that all you have? Is this, is this, this conduit is going on to private property?
Yeah, the pole will be on public property.
Okay, but do you have an easement for this conduit, or?
Yeah, I think we applied, yeah, we applied for an easement, too.
Okay, all right, good.
And that will be, that will be feeding a transformer pad that's going to feed those three buildings.
I see, okay. All right, any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this? Hearing and seeing none of them, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, these three locations that are coming forward, are they three apartment buildings?
Actually, there's, there's going to be five feet, I guess, on public property.
Well, I think we should, because of the lack of information, and I want to go over it in detail, this should go to zoning subcommittee.
I actually have all the information here. We're going to put a pole in front of number 83 to 103, Ward Street.
To put three condominium buildings? I understand. You want three condominium buildings? You're going to feed off, that's where the three locations are?
Well, that's the only part that's on public property, the rest is on the private property of those three apartment buildings.
Okay, that's why I want to go before zoning, so I can hear, get more about this.
Council, that's not the normal protocol. I mean, you can want to do that, but we normally approve these.
If I have questions, you don't think that's normal?
Can you ask the questions?
I don't, okay. How many apartment buildings are going to be there?
There's going to be three.
Three apart, how high?
I don't know that.
How many units?
I don't know that.
Where is the pole location?
The pole location is going to be near Macoba Street, across the street on Ward Street.
Council, this was, this was already approved by the city council to build these units, so.
I understand, Mr. President. I understand exactly. And I was against them then, and you must, my appearance must be that I'm against them now. Do you understand? Now you get it. I'm in complete opposition of this project, and I just feel for the life of me, it's going to be an intrusion on that neighborhood like none's ever seen before. I never thought this would come to fruition, to be honest with you. And it's not your fault, but you're one of the means that.
Well, this is near BJ's. I don't know.
I know, I know exactly where it is. I was asking you questions, I already knew. I'm just trying to hold up the process so I get more detail. I'm against this project, 1,000%.
I should have realized where the project was and where you were coming from, Councilor Guanasso. Somehow, I was blinded on that. But we'll move to question.
Shall the city council approve the petition of National Grid to install a conduit on Ward Street? Councilor Rigo?
No.
No, Councilor Janino?
Nope.
No, Councilor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councilor Haas?
No.
No, Councilor Morabito?
No.
No, Councilor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Councilor Patch?
No.
No, Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Powers?
No.
No, Councilor Riordan?
No.
No, and Council President Zambudo?
No.
No, the petition of National Grid to install conduits on Ward Street has been denied. Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on the application of National Grid for a pole location on Kimball Avenue in the city of Revere.
You got this one? What do you have?
Mary Ellen Murphy, 170 Medford Street, Malden. This is something that the city and the neighborhood wants, pole located on Kimball Ave. And on that pole is going to be a floodlight, light up Zero Veterans of Foreign Wars Parkway, which has been some illegal dumping of trash, I guess. And it's pretty dark there, so this is probably pretty important that this be passed.
Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Any opponents?
Some of there are proponents.
Proponents? You got proponents out there? Want to just raise your hand if you don't want to come up to the microphone? Okay, a proponent had to go outside for a minute, okay. All right, any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors?
Mr. President.
Councilor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this council voted to have this installed about six weeks ago, and this is the follow-up. There has been illegal dumping at the corner of Kimball Ave and Waller Ave. And as she stated, that it is a very dark area, and we do, we plan on putting a floodlight on it, and also a TV camera that will go back to the police station to, you know, try and stop the dumping down there that bothers the residents and doesn't make our city very nice when it, when it does happen. So I encourage my councilors to vote in favor of this petition tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Novoselsky. Okay, on the question.
Shall the city council approve the petition of National Grid to install a pole and floodlight on Kimball Avenue? Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the petition for Kimball Avenue has been approved.
Madam Clerk, on the former, the pole before Kimball Ave, I want to change my vote to yes.
This is for the Ward Street petition?
Correct.
Councilor Zambudo is changing his vote to yes, the petition is still denied.
Okay, thank you.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on the special permit application of Robert Cochran from Boeburn LLC of Nine Whitney Road, Oxford, Mass., for a request to construct six townhouses within the RB district at 75 Lansum Street, Revere, Mass.
Proponents, name an address for the record, Council.
Mr. President, Honorable Counselors James Cipolletta, 385 Broadway, Revere, on behalf of Bob Aaron LLC. With me is Bob Cochran, who is the principal in the development. Mr. President, this is a petition for a special permit to construct a six-unit townhouse development in an RB zone, and it's on approximately 18,000 square feet of land. As a matter of fact, it's 17,768 square feet. Currently, the triangular piece of property is occupied by a contractor's yard, which houses two metal buildings, some construction equipment, and assorted trucks and other vehicles. What Bob has done is entered into an agreement contingent upon his ability to obtain a special permit with Mr. Robichard, which this council, in its wisdom, a number of years ago, gave a special permit to this, to Mr. Robichard, to operate, which he has done very successfully and very quietly, I might add. and very quietly, I might add, at, at that location. The property is, is bounded by Stop &amp; Shop on one side, Route 1 on the other side, and I would add that it abuts zero residential uses. It is accessed by two ways, one by Marble Street and the other by Grover. The configuration of the townhouses are suggested to be five three-bedroom, two-bath townhouses and one two-bed, two-bath townhouse. And as you can see on the, on the plan that was submitted with the application, each one of these townhouse units has a garage, and it has a driveway in front of the garage. So there's plenty of parking. But for the last townhouse, which is sort of jammed up into the, into the corner, where it was impossible structurally and reasonably to install a garage, they have two off-street parking spaces installed there. There is also a 13th spot that's on the side where the townhouses are, and along the edge, although it's not shown on the plan as parking, there's also space there to park another four or five vehicles opposite the, the townhouse development. It's located at the very end of, of Marble Street, and albeit it's, it's a straight shot down Marble Street to the end, it's in a, it's in an area that although it's zoned RB, Residence B, has been historically used as a light industrial or a commercial use. It's Bob's intention to return this to the residential character of the neighborhood as anticipated by the zoning of, of RB. We would anticipate, and I want to just click off the, what I think are the high points of, of the questions that will come at us during the course of the hearing and again at the subcommittee meeting. Parking, all of the parking is contained on-site. There is no need to go off-site for any parking, not visitor parking, not resident parking, not overflow parking. Bob has, and his engineers have accounted for all that to be contained right on that 17,700-plus parcel of land. Secondly, we anticipate only a maximum of 12 cars to be associated with the project. And we anticipate that they are going to be pleasure vehicles, as opposed to what's there now, and not to say Mr. Robichaud is writing, you know, caravans of the trucks that, as we've seen, coming from the sagas landfill to go down to Winfield Beach, but what Bob is proposing is going to be a much lighter traffic flow with much smaller vehicles, and we assume and accounting on that they're not all going to be coming and going at the same time. The use, the use of a residential property in an RB zone is much more desirable and much more benign than what's there now, than what can go there under the special permit that exists, or a special permit for an expansion of a non-conforming use. We think that it's much more desirable to the city, to the neighborhood, to the community, will cause very little impact to the, the neighboring Stop &amp; Shop, and certainly to the, the users of Route 1, which, which abuts it to the major side of, of the boundary. In measuring the issuance of a special permit, a number of things are taken into account, and I've, I won't repeat what's in the application, it speaks for itself, but one of the things that is a major point that courts look at, that semi-judicial, quasi-judicial bodies as yourself look at, is is this use substantially more desirable and substantially less detrimental than what is currently there? And I think that the answer to that is obvious. The residential use as opposed to a heavier construction yard, commercial use, is a much better use. The council also might be familiar with, with Bob Cochran, because a number of years ago, Bob appeared before the city council with a proposal that was very similar to this, and he had acquired some land on Revere Beach Parkway. And if Bob, you could show me, you might, you might recognize the work that he did and the project that he installed. If you would be coming from Beachmont, if, if you're heading toward Broadway, and you get to the lights at Harris Street, you take that left, and just as you, you're coming out of the curve after the, the brick condominiums, and before that, and before that, oh, I'm sorry, and before that gas station, these are the townhouses that Bob constructed. And I would dare to say that he lived up to the confidence that the, and I'm wondering if the camera can catch that, the confidence that the city council showed in issuing that special permit for the construction of these townhouses. It's a similar-type design, a little more updated, but to be sure, is very benign, very residential-looking, it's not monolithic, it has, you know, sort of a, a very upscale look and feel to it, and I might add, if it wasn't in the application, I think it should have been, these are condominiums, these aren't rentals, these are not market-rate rental going out to, on, on the rental market. There was some discussion as well, and we've talked to some of the councilors, we talked to the Ward Council, and hopefully between now and the time of the subcommittee meeting and after, we can talk to some of the rest of the councilors as well about their concerns. It was mentioned that there was some concern about sewerage, especially whereas I think there was a, another project or another issue that came before the council recently on the, in the Washington Avenue area. There is a 24-inch main sewer, sewer main that goes right through this property, and it's, this is downstream from where that other project would be tying in, so it's not going to be any conflict. As well as the 24 inches, we would suggest, is ample, if not, if not surpassing the requirements to handle this small six-unit townhouse development. But these are the things that have been percolating as we've been speaking to people, speaking to councilors, speaking to those who are interested in, in, in the, the project. So, if there are any of the zoning questions that the council may have, I can answer them. Construction-wise, Bob has experience, and he can well handle those questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other proponents, people in favor? Mr. Director, or Mr. Economic Sa?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm going to be very fast, I have another meeting at 7:15, so I apologize, but I wanted to just come here this evening just to give you a little bit of background of what transpired up to tonight. Frank Strangie, Director of Community Development, I met with two other developers on this parcel of land in the past, and we didn't particularly like the developments because we felt that there was just too many units being planned to be put in this area. You know, we're, we're trying to be aggressive in attracting developers and developments, but we want to be smart about it. We want smart, smart growth. And, you know, when these developers come in over the past year and a half, we, we just, one wanted to come in for a zoning change, another one wanted to come in for so many variances, and we just didn't feel like it was conducive to what the neighborhood would be looking for. So when Mr. Cochran came in and we went over the development and he proposed, you know, the number of units, we felt, okay, this is a residential development, it's six units, it's low in density, we felt that that would be more attractive than what could possibly come in, in the future. We were very concerned, Mr. Strangie and I, of what could possibly happen in this area. So when we met with Mr. Cochran, we also did a background check of what he's done in different areas, both in Revere and Malden and so forth, and he has a, a very, very high reputation. So I wanted to just come here briefly to, to let you know what happened. We feel that this project is, is, would be conducive in the neighborhood. Obviously, some of the concerns of, of the neighbors were addressed, whether it's, you know, parking, whether it's water and sewer, things of that nature. So I just wanted to come before you because we felt strongly that, out of all the proposals that we witnessed so far, this was by far, by far, the least dense in terms of number of units, and something that would be conducive to the neighborhood. So we wanted, I just wanted to express, let you know what, what has been happening, and we feel positive on this development. And I know that Mr. Cochran has, works very, very, very well with the city of Revere, so just wanted to give my, my two cents on that, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tuster. Any other proponents, people in favor of this proposal? You want to come to the microphone?
Andrew Robichaud, my address is 251 Allen Street in Randolph. I own the property in question, I own the abutting property at 41 Marble Street. I just wanted to say that, you know, I've made a decision that I no longer need the contractor's yard, so ultimately, something will happen with it, whether it's this project or another one, and I really feel that it's for the benefit of the community, if, instead of looking at a contractor's yard, you're looking at an attractive new housing development. And I intend to still be a presence in the community because I'm still going to own the office building at 41 Marble Street, so I'll still be in the neighborhood doing my maintenance and taking care of my other property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Any other proponents, people in favor? Are you a proponent, ma'am?
Not for the last time.
Okay, okay, hearing and seeing none of them, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed?
Mr. President, I have a, if you may, I have a communication from somebody who couldn't make it here tonight.
Certainly.
Against it.
Madam, Madam Clerk, that'll be the first opponent.
This is from Mr. Armando Leo of 701 Washington Avenue. I am opposed to build six connected townhouses across from 41 Marble Street. The area is already congested, and the fire department conducts drills to make sure equipment can get through. As I understand, the planning board has denied it because townhouses are not allowed in this area. I do not know if the area can handle any more residents because of the water and sewer problems in the area.
Okay, any other opponents? Step to the mic, please. Name an address for the record.
I'm, I'm challenged, sorry. Hi, I'm Andrea Robichaud, no relation to Mr. Robichaud, although we do call you Uncle Eddie in our house, 255 Grover Street. And while I think it would be very nice to have residential in that area, we live on basically a horseshoe, which on a map, nobody should come up that street unless you need to go to the gym that's there, or there is a mosque on Friday afternoons. It is one of the busiest streets, I think, in the city. I'm out there all the time with the dog screaming at people to slow down. So although we have a construction yard, it's very quiet, I've lived there for 25 years, I've never, very rarely see trucks going in and out, to add 12, potentially 12 cars to that street, I think is going to be outrageous. I mean, I go to work in the morning, it sometimes takes me 10 minutes to get around to Washington Ave. So to fight, potentially, I would think it's probably a working community, as we are, I just think it's too congested as it is, and that's my concern. I wish you well, and I, I think it would be nice to have them, but I think it would be an inconvenience to us, so I just want to go on record.
Thank you. Any other opponents, people opposed? Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Rita Paschi, and I speak for my husband, Joseph Haltso. I live at 17 Marble Street, which is really not that close. In fact, I was the last house to get the inquiry about this meeting. I just want to say that although I'm not opposed or for it, living on Marble Street is very difficult. We have a terrible water problem, terrible sewerage. The sewerage covers on Marble Street pop-up, also on Washington Street, that goes into Marble Street, the sewer covers pop-up, and the water situation can be very, very dangerous. We all have sump ups on that street, all the people that I know have sump ups, and we are concerned. Every time we hear of a lot of rain or anything like that, the ground level is very high, and we know where it's going to go, right into our basements, especially us who have finished basements. And again, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents, people opposed? Name an address for the record.
Rob DiMaddia, 325 Rumney Road, gentleman, gentlelady. As you all know, this particular neighborhood has been plagued for years with parking problems caused directly by the owner of this property, because he also owns the building across the street that he rents. When the parking problem was at its worst and the complaints were constant, the owner alleviated some of it by setting aside the front of his contractor's yard for tenant parking. Now, from looking at the plans, it appears that this area, which is located in front of the existing stockade fence, will be eliminated. His tenants rely on that critical space for parking, and if you remove those spaces, the problem will return. The proposed development for a six-unit townhouse is simply too large and doesn't conform to the neighborhood, which is primarily single-family homes. In addition, five of the six townhouses are proposed to have three bedrooms with a single-car garage and tandem parking for each unit. And we all know the problems with tandem parking. How many times did Counselor Kalala argue against it? I didn't see anything in the plan that would accommodate families that may have more than two cars, which is likely for any home with three bedrooms. Now, where would those additional cars park? Furthermore, their plan doesn't appear to take into account any guest parking, and I'm going to challenge the learned attorney in his opinion that it's going to be plenty of room. If additional resident parking is necessary beyond what is provided in the plan, it would appear that those vehicles would have to be parked on the street, further reducing the available parking for his tenants. This would result in an even greater worsening of the parking problem, because not only would you be taking away needed parking spaces, but you'll be adding more vehicles with complaints potentially coming from up to six additional families. I speak with some authority on this subject because I was a tenant in that building for five years. I recall on more than one occasion dealing with complaining neighbors, which I would refer to the owner. I also recall more than once the inability of the fire department, which would conduct periodic drills in the event of an emergency, to make the swing from Marble onto Lansum Street. In fact, it was the same owner, when confronted by a deputy fire chief on a Friday afternoon, who said, "Not my cars, not my vehicles." I also remember a dispute the owner had with the mosque, where he outright refused to allow them to park in front of that fence, and erected a steel chain across the entire length. Now, during that period of time, the situation was chaotic with complaining neighbors and frustrated tenants, including myself. Fortunately, that problem, which was done out of spite, was only temporary. However, this would be permanent. Their plan actually shows the porch of the first townhouse to be located in front of that existing fence. In fact, it's so close to the street, they would need a variance from the ZBA. Now, even if parking wasn't an issue, I would still be opposed to this development because of its sheer size. In fact, they don't even have enough square footage for the six homes to comply with the existing zoning, which is why they would need to seek another variance from the ZBA. This neighborhood is already dense enough, and the same can be said for our entire community with way too much housing and overcrowding, much of it being caused by greedy out-of-towners, which is impacting our quality of life. Do I need to remind all of you about that ugly monstrosity that's being constructed on the parkway? Unfortunately, this, that development didn't need any approval from you, but this one does. And I think Counselor Riordan had it right when he said recently that we can't keep making exceptions to our zoning, because all we'll be left with are exceptions. Show the residents who live in this area that you care more about them than a developer from Bauxford and a property owner from Randolph. And in closing, if the owner of this property wants to be a good neighbor, he should withdraw this proposal and come back with one that conforms to the neighborhood. A plan that has a carve-out to accommodate additional parking for his tenants would be a good start. In the meantime, you should clean up his construction yard, because it looks like a dump with rusted containers and abandoned cars. In fact, I would encourage one of you to file a motion tonight to have Inspeccional Services get over there and pay his property a visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since this is in my ward, I would like to start to say that this is a very tough situation for me, because I just, we just got through the council with a very tough situation between the neighbors and the developer down on the riverside of the pines. the neighbors and the developer down in the riverside of the pines. They wanted to put 32 condos and a boatyard down there, and most of the neighbors were against that. And what the neighbors, what the neighbors wanted there was townhouses instead of the condos. And they had the same, I believe, zoning there, light industry as the, as the boatyard has, down at the boatyard on the pines, river pines, as Mr. Robichaud's construction company. Now, I'm at the will of the neighbors, but I worry about what, what could possibly go there. You said that, you said that the, you haven't seen many trucks. I don't think they are coming out of there, but I don't think that construction site's been in use for a few years. What you could see is another construction site where we couldn't have, we will have no vote. Small business or whatever. So I wish, I remember, I grew up on Victoria Street, and the condos, the townhouses that he showed you on the Parkway is where I grew up, and that used to be a field here and what have you. I wasn't on the council then when that went through, but I, my family homestead is still on Victoria Street with my sister, but the neighbors were against it then. And when they saw the finished product, they were happy. And I don't believe anybody's had any complaints in the city since they were put up. I know change, it's very hard. Change is hard, but it's going to happen. And I want you all to make sure, this ain't going to be voted on tonight. So I want you to consider, actually, the last speaker, he just has a grudge with the owner, so I'm not taking anything that he says at all. But the neighbors, I'll listen to. And, you know, if you want to have a neighborhood meeting, I'd be glad to set one up. We can discuss it, and whatever you decide, you know, I'm willing to work with you. But again, Mr. Counselor Powers, that just went through it down in his ward, they're threatening now to put 110 low-housing units there, now in spite. The developer there, it's not like this developer. He was very hard to work with. So again, I have no, I have, haven't decided. I just want you to know, 12 cars, and let me also bring up my dear colleague, Counselor Janino, when her family business went out in Marlowe Street. They could have built, by right, they could have built, they could have built 40 apartments there. But they put, they put beautiful townhouses and single-family houses that fits right in with the, with the community. So again, I'm just throwing that out there. If you want to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting, and we can get all, we can get all the, all the neighbors there, and whatever you decide, I'm willing to work with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. This is going to zoning, but I think Counselor Powers had something he wanted to add, but I'll remind everybody it's going to zoning.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry, I know everybody's tired, I won't even get up. I'll sit here. If for some reason there are--
Come to the microphone, because everybody has to hear your question.
I just have one question. If by chance the townhouses don't sell, and it could happen with the way economy goes, what would happen? Like, are there specially, like that, I don't even know what it's called, Section 8? How does that, can they automatically, like, the places down the beach, a lot of those? That is a big concern of mine as well.
And it's, I'm glad it's your concern, but I think the developer will guarantee us that that will not happen.
Point of information, Mr. President, the developer cannot guarantee it, because of an individual owning the place and they wanted to rent it to a Section 8 tenant, they'd almost be impossible not to be required to do it. If they discriminated against a Section 8 tenant, they could be in violation of the law.
That was a scenario I hadn't contemplated. I was trying to get a commitment from this developer. That's a different scenario, Counsel Redden.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think of that.
You want to address that, Attorney Sipilota?
Yes, just very concisely, I understood the question to be, if the condominiums didn't sell as condominiums, would the developer rent them either under Section 8 or some other program? Was that the--
Well, basically, can those six units eventually be Section 8 housing, as it did happen down on Revere Beach in those beautiful condominiums several years ago?
Bob Cochran, Bob Aaron LLC, 9 Whitney Road, Buxford, Massachusetts. I understand the question she's asking is if, you know, could these potentially be rented out? The amount of money I'm going to expend on these townhouses, the project I'm doing, does not warrant renting them out. If I need to be somewhat flexible in my pricing to get them sold, I can do that. I have no intentions of renting these out. I have rental property. The rental property I have, I have nowhere the kind of money that I'll invest in these, in those rental properties.
I hope that, I hope that answers your question. Great. Because we got it answered in five different scenarios here. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I realize this is going to committee, but sir, I'd like to throw this out there for you. You're talking about five three-bedroom and one one-bedroom unit? Did I hear that right?
It's actually five three-bedroom and one two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom, okay. Let me ask you this. Would you be, and something you might think about before the subcommittee meeting, talking about maybe two-bedroom units for the entire project? My main concern is not only the traffic. When you have a three-bedroom unit, people do have a, there's a couple of cars, maybe three, four cars going into that unit, who knows? But my primary concern is schools. How many more schools are we going to be forced to build in this city to? We have 7,000 kids in the school system right now. Every time we build a two-bedroom, even a two-bedroom unit, we're getting more kids. But a three-bedroom unit, I'll guarantee you, anybody that's buying a three-bedroom unit, no matter how nice they are, there's probably two or three kids going into that unit. No doubt in my mind about it. So I'd ask you to consider something like that before you go before the zoning subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Counsel Marabito, quickly, please.
I know this is going to zoning, and I just have one quick question. How much square living area is on, square foot is the perimeter on the Parkway that you previously built?
How big are the units?
Yeah, no, how, the total area, how many square footage that you built on it?
I was, it was 12, 13 years ago, I truly don't remember.
Because what I can't get past is that there's six townhouses, 18,000 square feet. That's only 3,000 square feet each townhouse to build on.
Which is what the requirements are under the zoning, 3,000 square feet per unit.
It's just very, very tight. I definitely want to look, I have more questions, I'll save it for the subcommittee.
Just in case it's not in the record, Mr. President, on 30 July, the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals issued us two variances. One for the deficiency of 100 and some odd square feet per, on the FAR, and the other one was because of that easement, we had to move one of the buildings a little closer to the front yard setback, and those were the two zoning variances that were required, and they were issued case number A1420.
So that was the variance, the easement was because of that 24-inch sewer line that we were talking about?
That's right, because we couldn't build over the sewer line, we had to push one of them backwards.
Okay. I know there were some concerns with the neighbors about the sewage. 24-inch sewer line can do a hotel and more. Counsel Janino.
I just have a quick point for anyone who's here for this issue and the next two coming up. I think that these are all issues that every single counselor is going to have 100 questions about, so all three of these, I can almost guarantee you're going to be going to zoning. So if you don't hear us all asking questions tonight, there are going to be hours of debate for the next three issues that I can guarantee you will happen. So just for anyone that's kind of not aware of the process, there's a ton more conversation that's going to happen about the next three issues. So thank you for coming and taking the time out to listen to the beginning of those conversations.
Thanks for that point of information, Counselor. That's a very good point. Okay, this is zoning.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the special permit application of RLS Realty Investment LLC, 301 Newbury Street, Danvers, Mass., for a request to convert a non-conforming commercial use and structure into a two-family residence on Lot 7 at 97-99 Centennial Ave.
Proponents, people in favor, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, my name is Lou Crone. I'm attorney for RLS Realty Investment. Sorry, apologize. My name is Lou Crone. I'm the attorney for RLS Realty Investment, the applicant for this particular special permit. I'll make this short, I understand the council's time is very valuable, and as the councilwoman just said a moment ago, I'm sure you'll send it to zoning and have questions there. Effectively, what we have is a residentially zoned district with a one 5,000-square-foot lot, 50 by 100 rectangle, with a two-family wooden structure attached to a single-story brick commercial structure. What we're looking for is to change an existing non-conforming use to a less detrimental non-conforming use, modifying the structure, the brick structure accordingly, turning a commercial use into a residential use. We're looking to put effectively a two residential unit structure in the brick structure, which is attached to the wooden structure. If you look in Exhibit B, you'll see plot plan, and you'll see the proposed and the existing, with regards to construction sketches, they're not plans. Attached in Exhibit E, you'll see an actual photograph of the facade of the building and the side of the building. Effectively, the developer wishes to modify the facade and modify the interior of the brick structure to make it, again, a non-conforming, less non-conforming use, to make the entire building, both structures at the plot at the site, residential use. That's pretty much the entire proposal. If there are any questions, I certainly don't want to take any more time. I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor of this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any city council, Counsel Novoselvsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm not going to make a big oration right now, but just to let you know, I have not received any opponents' phone calls or emails regarding this project, and we will talk about this further at the zoning subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else zoning?
Thank you for your time.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on the special permit application of Franklin Avenue Investment LLC, 111 Everett Ave, Chelsea, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to convert a non-conforming structure in use from an eight-unit residential structure to a 10-unit residential structure on Lot 69 at 34 Franklin Ave, Revere, Mass.
Proponents, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, councilors. Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent Franklin Avenue Investment LLC and its principal, Rick Costa, who's here with us tonight. Don't want to belabor this too much, it's become a late night, and I know we're going to zoning subcommittee. We're here to seek a special permit to allow for two additional single-bedroom units relative to the property at 34 Franklin Ave. Our application speaks for itself. This property's been a storied history with Inspeccional Services under the prior owner, and we're hoping to have this new owner really be able to come in and fix it up, and this request is part of that. Happy to get into it in zoning subcommittee.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor of this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counsel Novoselvsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm going to hold my comments until the subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, zoning. Thank you.
Calendar item number nine, report of the Elder Affairs Subcommittee meeting.
Counsel Marabito, and I apologize you had no microphone during your wonderful presentation, but let us hear about it now.
It's a little late, but that's okay. Let's give the report. Here it is. Even though the senior center is falling apart, we have a new director, Steve Fielding, and he's done everything in his power with the best of his ability with donated, retrieving donated services, fixing the interior, exterior of the building, new programs. He spoke about some of the material items that he would like fixed, and he's going to bring that forward to the clerk, and the clerk will bring it to the mayor. And that's basically it. It was basically, they brought all their concerns to us, and I thought it was an informal meeting. Thanks.
Mr. President, this side.
Counsel Novoselvsky.
Just a point of information, I know when I came in, the mics were dead, but we could hear it on TV, so just to let you know that the people could hear what was going on. You know, before I left my house, so the mics were just dead, these mics were dead, but that was my, that my main mic was working. So just so you know that.
Well, that's good. Well, Counsel Marabito was very informative, and we appreciate your efforts.
Calendar item number 10, communication from Revere Cares relative to a proclamation designating September 2014 as Recovery Month in the city of Revere.
Ladies?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Viviana Cataño. I'm a Revere resident on Pearl Avenue, the manager for the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Task Force for the Revere Cares Coalition, and I'm here to talk to you about making September, proclaiming September as National Recovery Month. So each year, the U.S. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, SAMSA, declares September as Recovery Month across the United States. This national service increases awareness and understanding of mental and substance use disorders, and promotes the message that behavioral health is essential to health, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people do recover. This year, SAMSA will be declaring, celebrating the theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery, Speak Up and Reach Out." As you may recall, in previous years, the Revere City Council has supported Revere Cares' request to remember this important month and voted unanimously in support of establishing September as National Recovery Month. This year, once again, the Revere Cares' Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Task Force, along with the Revere Beach Planning Committee and members from the Power of No Club at Revere High School, respectfully ask you to proclaim September 2011 as National Recovery Month. It is important that the city of Revere takes the time to once again publicly encourage individuals to consider seeking treatment and recovery. In fact, according to SAMSA, in 2012, there were 2.5 million people aged 12 and older who needed treatment for an illicit drug or alcohol problem and received treatment at a special facility. In addition, in 2012, data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health indicated that over 1,200 individuals from Revere sought treatment for substance use disorders, including alcohol, cocaine, heroin, and other opioids. alcohol, cocaine, heroin, and other opioids. Unfortunately, we also know that Revere, that Revere residents have lost loved ones to addictions. Families all over this community are impacted by substance use, and it is important for us to let them know that they're not alone, and that support is available to them.
Good evening. My name is Julia Newhall, 46 Harris Street. I am the Massachusetts Opioid Addiction Prevention Collaborative Grant Manager. It's a mouthful. The key events of Recovery Month include the 8th Annual Revere Beach Memorial, which will occur on September 21 at 7:00 PM. This event aims to remember those who have lost their lives due to drugs and alcohol. It gives families an opportunity to meet with others who have faced similar experiences. All proceeds of this event go towards sustaining the event, and a local treatment facility receives scholarship money as well as a high school student who's affected by drugs and alcohol, and we hope that you'll all vote unanimously for this.
Hi, Carrie Ann Salemi, 34 Dedham Street, Revere. I am a recovery coach. I've been in recovery for over 13 years, and the 4th Annual Community Walk for Recovery will occur immediately before the memorial on September 21 and will accumulate at the BNC in around 6:45 PM. The Power of No students will spread the message, they are above the influence of alcohol and other drugs, and we will encourage other young people all over Revere to remain above the influence of substances. Additionally, the walk serves to show solidarity with those community members who are in recovery and who benefit from knowing that Revere residents applaud them and stand with them in their efforts to remain sober. Details for the walk are in the process of being finalized and will be publicized in the coming weeks. By coming together as a community, we have a better chance of preventing addiction, getting treatment for those who need it, and providing healing for the family and friends who have lost loved ones. So please take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Janino?
Thank you. This is something that I've spoken about every time they've come up before the council. I was a member of the Power of No at Revere High right when it started, and it was one of the greatest things that I was involved in at the high school, and it's grown so much since I left, and I think it's one of the best programs that we have for our students in Revere. The walk is so important, and it really is a very special event for the city, and I think it brings to light a lot of issues that people don't talk about, and especially with all the recent events that have happened in the news and people that have passed away, it's something that people are talking about, and they're becoming more open about, so I think it's really important that we support this. Lieutenant O'Hara always has a phenomenal job working to put the walk together every year with Revere Cares and the high school, so I think this is definitely a great event for the city that people should really take time out to be a part of. So thank you guys for coming tonight, and I wish you the best of luck in planning.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Riden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I should put a point out, and it's laudable as it is, in addition to the humanistic viewpoint in my profession as a criminal defense attorney, I can tell you that fully over 30% of the people that I deal with who have committed crimes have done so because of their addiction to drugs, or their addiction to alcohol, or some other form of abuse. And to address the, while we are addressing not only the drug and abuse issue humanistically, we are also addressing it for the rest of us. We all benefit from a decrease in crime, and removing some, one of the causes, one of the main causes of it, is greatly enhances the quality of living for the rest of us as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Riden. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that, you know, anybody, anybody today either knows somebody very close, or knows of somebody that has an addiction problem, or have, unfortunately, had a member of family die from their addiction, they do such great work. I know I haven't missed one, one of these, since it started in the beach, the event, and it's just so sad, it just gets, the list gets bigger and bigger. So I just, I want to praise the work they do, especially Carrie Ann. And I just, I hope people will attend and support the people that have this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patch, and I want to thank the young ladies for coming up here and educating some people at home especially. Some of us know a lot about substance abuse and a lot about recovery, and unfortunately, a lot about a lot of people dying. And this brings it all together, and that memorial certainly brings it home, to hear all those names and see all those families who have suffered the loss of a loved one is really something. So I want to thank you for your work, and I'm sure my colleagues are going to support this proclamation to make September Recovery Month, and thank you again. On the motion.
Shall the city council hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as National Recovery Month in the city of Revere? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riden?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the city council hereby proclaims the month of September 2014 as National Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor facilitate the repair of fencing that was damaged during the tornado at Revere High School along all of the residences which abut the high school property.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the outset, I want to say that I think that the mayor has done an excellent job in bringing our city back to a sense of normality after the recent tornado, and he's to be complimented for that. I had a call from some people down on, to be exact, I think 83 Eastern Avenue, 75 True Street, just to name a two of the residences that were affected by the tornado with the trees that had toppled over on the fences. I was down there today, and the fences at those two addresses certainly have not been repaired yet, and I would imagine there may be others that are along the perimeter of the high school, that green fence they have, and I would just ask the mayor to, again, as the motion states, facilitate the repair of that fence so that people get, can get their, you know, rear yards and side yards back to normality. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Morabito, that the mayor contact the DCR to erect signage at the entry of the breakwater off of Broad Sound Avenue to warn individuals they are at risk of being stranded on the breakwater during tide changes. Currently, there's a sign a quarter mile away and is not visible at the breakwater.
Counselor Morabito?
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Morabito, that the mayor contact the fire chief to conduct an inspection of the electronic gate located on Mermaid Avenue to see if the gate will open in emergency situations, and allow entry of large emergency fire apparatus vehicles. If not, to take corrective action to prevent it from being a hazard. The recent stranding at the breakwater is off of Broad Sound Avenue and Mermaid Avenue allowing easy access to Broad Sound Ave heighten the concerns of the Pierview Ave residents.
Counselor Morabito?
Basically, this motion goes with the other motion. Residents of the Pierview area emailed a bunch of us councilors on the strandings that occurred a couple weeks ago, and basically, it was right off Broad Sound Ave, and the closest access route to Broad Sound is Mermaid Ave, and there's an electronic gate, and it took emergency vehicles a long time to respond, so I think it's very important that we grant their wish and have it inspected.
Counselor Janino?
And on that note, also encourage residents to not walk out there. It is not safe, and I do not recommend to do so, and you're putting first responders' lives at danger as well when you take a chance and go out for a walk, so look from afar, it's a beautiful view. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Late motion presented by Counselor Patch, that the mayor contact Stop &amp; Shop on Squire Road to request that they maintain their property, including trash fencing and landscaping, in accordance with their agreement with the city.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you. Sorry about the late motion, but when people, I was talking about this other matter, it came up quite a bit, that the Stop &amp; Shop, since they changed manhoodship, the original manager, he did a great job, but they were, part of the agreement was that they'd take the property along Marble Street, the fence, the trees, and cut the grass and the trash, and they just, I seem I have to make this motion now every year. So I just want a communication from the mayor to the manager to do what he's supposed to do. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Late motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that our state delegation request the DCR to immediately rescind the parking ban along Revere Beach Boulevard, which prohibits parking after 10:00 PM.
I think everybody knows why I put this motion in, that I think most of us received the communication about some people from another country coming here, and I don't think they're coming back because they went to dinner, and at 10:20, they went to their car, and it was towed. Now, if it was only this one set of people, I'd be upset, but I've probably heard this 500 times now, 500 times. People that come to a restaurant on the beach are never coming back, and our reputation is, they think that we're part of this, they call it a scam. I think these people from Canada or wherever, they called it a scam, that that car was towed at 10 past, 20 past 10, after they, you know, probably spent 150 bucks for dinner and had a great time, come to the car, there's another 150 bucks, and you got a $50 cab ride to Lynn to pick up your car. It's really a great thing. So bottom line here is that there was a quiet zone created for a reason. It caused a problem with restaurants that was never intended, and everybody was afraid to address this for fear of getting their head chopped off. Now, I addressed this a long time ago, and met a lot of opposition, and I think that a lot of that opposition has gone away now because people understand that we've got to coexist with businesses on the beach, and if we don't, our taxes are going to continue to go up, and our development is going to continue to go down. So that's the purpose of this motion, I'm hoping to have support on it, and that's my spiel. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think there should be a meeting with regard to this, perhaps to come up with a time that it would be agreeable. Certainly, I don't think that after 11 o'clock at night, there are too many people out in restaurants on Revere Beach Boulevard having dinner, I think it's more people drinking. I would have to be opposed to this as it stands now without further discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Haas?
Mr. President, I agree with, I disagree with the way it was worded. I think we should still have the quiet zone from Revere Street to Santorini's. Now Santorini's and the other places are all commercial, all right? I was down there not too long ago, and I just, a fellow said to me, "Where did you park?" He said, "Across the street." And he said, "You better move your car." Well, there was no parking available on the right-hand side, so I said, "Let me look into it." I would vote for the motion if it basically went from Revere Street to Santorini's because Kelly's has no parking, and it makes no sense for two businesses to be penalized, absolutely no question.
The purpose of this motion is for this exact discussion, so that's what we're, that's what we're doing here. Counselor Riden, then Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And there has been some discussion on this, and I've been discussing it for a long time, and the problem is that there has to be some sort of an agreement between the people who live on the beach and the people who use the beach. It's a public beach. We always say it's the first public beach in the nation. What kind of a public beach shuts down at 10 o'clock at night when, in this day and age, people don't have access to the beach during the other regular times? Sometimes, like, people like go to the beach when it is dark out. As hot as that is for some of us sun worshippers to believe, it's a fact, and the fact that they don't have access has always bothered me. However, I understand the need for a quiet zone. I under, I should say, I understand the need for quiet. That is a matter of enforcement. There's enough state police down there, we have a state police barracks on that Boulevard, and there certainly should be enough personnel within that state police barracks to see that people, when they're down there, are acting appropriately at 11 o'clock at night, not that they're yelling and screaming, and that violates a certain trust you have when you go down that late at night in a residential neighborhood. I think we need to have a discussion on this. You know, the motion has, in as much as it puts it in front of us, is good, but I think it ought to go to committee, and I think we ought to have a discussion and find a way to approach DCR and the state police and figure out a way to make everybody relatively happy. No one's going to be ecstatic about it, but we need to please everybody on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riden. Counselor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I can't agree more with the point of the motion. There is nothing worse than taking friends from out of town down to Renzo and watching cars get towed, and having to explain why they're getting towed. Nobody from out of town really understands it. So I do, and I agree with Counselor Riden, I think that we ought to have some bigger discussion. Again, I would encourage us to invite members of our state delegation, or staff, or the members themselves to come, and, you know, community groups that are down there, because there is a reason to have, or a point of having a quiet zone, but there's also, you know, there's a happy medium where we can attract folks, and we can be Revere, America's first public beach, and not be towing people inappropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rigo. Counselor Guanasso?
I think it's a very simple process. Leave it in place, and just increase it to 11 o'clock from exactly where it is right now. Just make it one hour more, it makes it feasible, as has been stated. You know, if you're out for dinner, fine. We don't want to encourage people to come in and drink all hours of the night, but I think up until 11 o'clock is fine. Just leave it in the same area, 11 o'clock, just change those signs. That's reasonable.
Well, it is reasonable, but I think it's up for discussion, and I think we're going to have to have that discussion with DCR, and we're going to have to- We found out early that DCR matches to their own band, so good luck to all of us. Well, I think that we do have the support of the state delegation on this, so I think that we will have some, I think this is finally a time that we can make an adjustment to it. It might be 11, it might be 11:30, but it certainly can't be 10 o'clock, because if you're going out to dinner, and, you know, you might socialize a little after dinner, you might get there at quarter past 11 to get to your car, or whatever, if you want to still see your car there. But anyways, I'm going to send this to public safety. Everybody okay with that? Public safety. When's the next? We are adjourned until September 8.